Aloha mai kako. Mahalo nui for joining us this evening for our Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board Meeting. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025. Myself, the Chair, Kimionakane, we'll call this meeting into order at 7:00 PM. We, as typically, do have a very packed agenda this evening with a lot of really important information, so we want to make sure folks have time to do so. I'm gonna firstly start and ask one of our community members, TJ, to come up and open us up with Pule. And then from there, we will go through some opening remarks. Mahalo, Kako.
Ei, Pule, Kako. Ekamako, mako iloka kalani, kauika lavanui, o oika haku, o ika mana, o ai namaia pa'o. E'olu'olu'oe, ho poma ika ia mako, inoi ni yakuma, ma'ako ia o'oe. No'oko, lima paleana, no'oko'olu'olu', no'ka'a'a'a. No'ke aloha pa'o, nona mea pa'o, nona po'e'apao. E'olu'olu'oe maalama, ikamako ohana, ame kikayulu. Makainao kekiya sekresto, amen.
Mahalo, TJ, thank you so much. For folks that are joining us here in person, we are at the Waimea Nalo Public Library in the conference room. We remind folks that we are on a school campus, and so please conduct yourself accordingly. Restrooms are out here, to the right here, men and women. And then we have exits behind us, and then back in front of us here this way. So in the event of us needing to leave, please use the closest exit as possible. The purpose of the Neighborhood Boards and the Board Plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Is that... Smooth that. Thank you. Rules for engagement: Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon if you're online. For those of you that are here in person, just raising your hand will be sufficient. When you're recognized by myself, we will address the comments to the Chair. We ask that folks be mindful of their time. Remarks should not exceed three minutes, however, conversations do, and so we welcome them, okay? But we do offer that as a responsibility for all to just be mindful of the time that you utilize during the meeting. Ensuring that your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can mute and unmute for those dialing in on the phone by pressing star six. Reminder to please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comment and question. And then written comments and testimony may also be submitted to email with the contact information listed at the Neighborhood Commission Office website. We remind folks participating that this Board has adopted the function of aloha. Akahi, meaning kindness, to be expressed with tenderness. Loka'i, meaning unity, to be expressed with harmony. Olu'olu', meaning agreeable, to be expressed with pleasantness. Ha'a'a'a', meaning humility, to be expressed with modesty. And ahunui, meaning patience, to be expressed with perseverance in accordance with Hawaii Revised Statutes, Chapter 5-7.5. We recognize that there can be difficult conversations that we will have. That's what this Board is here to do, and so we welcome the difficulty in conversation. There's more chairs, so please be pull up, so don't be shy. Pull up a chair. No, forget put 'em back when you pile too. Nah, just kidding. The Board may take action on any agenda item required by State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted or unless added to the agenda, which will take a two-thirds vote. It's nine of the 13-member Board needed to add an item to this agenda. Doing so is not permitted, however, if the item to be added is of reasonably major importance, and two, if the item will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to an agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. We ask folks to please silence their electronic devices, and we remind folks that this meeting is being recorded. With that being said, we welcome you folks to this conversation, and we thank you guys for making time. We're gonna go through our roll call. Members, when your name is called, please respond, and then be mindful that when we do take any Board actions, to have your cameras on. Thank you.
Okay, hello. I'll begin the roll call. Board Member, Kanela Kama, aloha nui lai, I believe is absent. Board Member, Kuike O Kalani, kama ke'a o hello, I believe is absent. Board Member, Kimionakane.
Ei.
Here, thank you. Board Member, Lily Makaila, I believe is absent. Board Member, Jenna McKee.
Ei.
Here, thank you. Board Member, Mo'ata Moku Leihua, absent. Board Member, Kapiolani Ni.
Ei.
Here, thank you. Board Member, Ted Ralston, absent. And Board Member, Brenda Wong, I also believe is absent. So we have three Board Members tonight.
Mahalo. Recognizing that this Board needs seven members to conduct business, we do not have quorum, so we're gonna continue on with that in mind. And as we know, folks are traveling and will join us in a minute. Mahalo nui for that, thank you, Brandon. Members, we're gonna move on to our 'Olalano' 'el of the Month. It is taken from our beautiful historic document that shares with us really beautiful stories. So number 14, 'Ahu' kahokai ka'ipaka'i, a heap of disappointment at Kapakai. Fooled and left stranded. There's a mo'olalo attached to it, which we're gonna read for those online. In ancient times, two fishermen sailed from Kapakai, a small canoe landing between Upolu Point and the haia of Mu'okini and Kohala. As they were about to leave from Maui, a stranger asked permission to accompany them, and it was granted. Late that night, one of the fishermen signaled to the other to toss the passenger overboard, because he was doing nothing to help with the canoe. The passenger guessed what they were up to and cried, "Oh, how I forgot my kaua'i sinkers at the canoe landing." Kaua'i sinkers were very valuable, so they turned about and returned to Kapakai. Upon landing, the passenger had leaped ashore. When asked where the sinkers were, he pointed to two half-buried rocks nearby. The fishermen were disappointed, hoka, in not obtaining the coveted kaua'i sinkers. In another version, the saying was originated at the birth of Kamehameha'ikahi on a canoe. At the landing of Kapakai, his mother pretended illness, which drew attention to herself and gave Na'ole the opportunity to seize newborn baby and flee with him into hiding. That is a mo'olalo passed down orally to our communities, and it comes again from our 'Olalano' 'el. 'Ahu' kahokai kapakai. Mahalo for that. We're gonna move on to our emergency providers this evening, starting with our Honolulu Fire Department, and then our Honolulu Police Department. Mahalo nui for being here.
Good evening. My name is David Schubert. I'm Captain at the Waimea Nalo Fire Station Second Watch. I'm here to present the incident statistics for last month, August. We had 41 medical calls, five brush fires, one nuisance fire, one activated alarm, five motor vehicle accidents, and one mountain rescue. Our fire safety tip for the month is: Charge into fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign works to educate everyone about using these batteries safely. Lithium-ion batteries store a lot of energy in a small place. These batteries can overheat, start a fire, or explode if overcharged or damaged. By learning how to buy, charge, and recycle these batteries safely, you can help prevent a fire in your home. So the tips are: Buy only listed products. When buying a product that uses a lithium-ion battery, look for a safety certification mark such as a UL, ETL, or CSA. This means it meets important safety standards. Charge devices safely. Always use the cords that came with the product to charge, following the instructions by from the manufacturer. Buy new chargers from the manufacturer or one that the manufacturer has approved. Charge your device on a hard surface. Don't overcharge your device. Unplug it or remove the battery when it is fully charged. Recycling batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium-ion batteries in the trash or regular recycling bins, because they could start a fire. Recycle your device or battery at a safe battery recycling location. Visit callto recycle dot org to find a recycling spot near you. And finally, the Honolulu Fire Department is hosting a Fire Prevention Family Day event on October 4th at the Honolulu Zoo from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Bring the family to participate in activities and meet our fire and life safety partners.
Captain, thank you so much for the update and your report. Members online, questions for HFD? Seeing none, any community members online? Seeing none, any community members present? None. Captain, I just have one question, because this came up for us recently, and it's in regards to the petition that is going around from blue Hawaii helicopters regarding tours, and their petition is to drop essentially their ceiling cap from 1,500 feet to 700 feet to do tours here across several places in the state. Does the department or the county follow things like that at that level, and provide any testimony to them in your opinion or in your experience?
That's an excellent question, but I'm gonna have to research that to get the final information, but we will get an answer.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Seeing no other questions, mahalo for being here, Captain. You guys be safe, thank you. HPD? We'll have HPD up next, followed by Ocean Safety, if Aka's around. Officer Atkins, are you starting us?
Yeah.
Lieutenant, you're gonna start us off? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board and members of the audience. I'm Lieutenant Sanford Yu. I'm one of your three lieutenants for District Four Night Watch. Present the stats to you for August. It was one motor... Oh, I'm sorry, zero motor vehicle thefts compared to zero the previous month. Burglaries remain the same at one. Thefts decreased from 12 to four. Motor vehicle break-ins decreased from seven to three, and there were zero robberies. Be willing to answer any questions at this time.
Lieutenant, thank you so much for the report. Members online, questions for HPD? Seeing none, anyone on... Sorry, Mo'ata, was that you? No. Any community members online, questions for HPD? None, any members here in the public? Seeing none. Lieutenant, I have a question about these really fancy security trailers that are up at some of the lookouts.
I saw one at Makapu.
Yeah, and it goes up through EV. All three of them have one of them, and I'm wondering, what is that program? What is that, how does that come about in the community?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Okay. And the reason we ask that is, you know, as you are aware, the county deals with several incidences of vandalism in our parks, and I'm wondering if that is going to potentially serve a role to minimize or document vandalism in parks.
I know it's a deterrent.
Sure.
Yeah, because that thing has lights. I believe it records.
We hope it records.
I don't know if it transmits, but...
Okay. Okay. Yeah, if we can find out what that process is like, I think that would be something we'd be interested in.
Sure.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much, Lieutenant, for being here. Officer Atkins, are you adding anything to the presentation this evening?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to... Kuieke had asked about our procedures for the tsunami evacuation. He wanted to know what our procedures were.
Please, thank you.
So, yeah, so what HPD does is, we begin with, we give... Start warning the evacuation, people in the evacuation zones with our PAs and stuff. And it mostly applies to like unsheltered people, you know, people on the beach that may not have access to, you know, whatever, that they may not get the warning. So we begin with warnings and evacuation areas, and then we begin assisting with the egress of the evacuation areas, and that could be directing traffic. And then we also set up roadblocks to stop people from coming into the evacuation zone. Then, within, and our district commander is the one who sets where we're gonna set up the roadblocks and what area, and then we respond, you know, to different areas, however the traffic's flowing. We figure out, okay, we need someone over here directing traffic. And come 45 minutes prior to the wave coming, we stop anyone from going in whatsoever into the evacuation zones, and then within about 30 minutes, we pull out to safe zones as well. And that's our procedure for that. And then I know also someone was asked about, you know, they had, I think it was, someone was pregnant, and then they couldn't get them out there, so they had to walk a mile or so, something like that. So the answer to that would be to call 911 and, you know, let them know the situation, and even also maybe driving up to the roadblock and letting them know the situation, and we'll try to assist with getting that person out, because that's one of our duties, is to try to help evacuate those people. So that's basically our procedures for what we do.
Thank you so much for the follow-up. I know Kuieke may have some follow-up questions for that as well as I do. And I think it starts with just the recognition that, you know, I sat in the line just as they closed access to parts of the community, and it was with the intent of, you know, going in to bring people out as well. And there seems to be a lot of, or it seemed in that moment to have a lot of confusion about what was supposed to happen, and I'm just wondering if HPD has considered or has had a review of those protocols since that event. I know it was a hectic mess for everybody, so I don't expect it to be, you know, simply answered right here, right now, but we certainly have seen firsthand experiences, as I'm sure your officers have, about folks that still needed to be in places, and it's a whole, like I said, system issue. But I wonder if we might be able to talk about that on a community level and just provide some feedback directly about how the community lived through that particular system, as well as the, you know, the experience of our officers as well, which we really appreciate people being and putting themselves on the line. I just wonder if there is an opportunity for us to have a larger discussion about some of the protocols at some point in time.
Yeah, well, we definitely were reviewing our procedures, because we know, you know, a lot of people kinda got stuck, because it just so happened to be at the end of the workday, you know, everyone's trying to get home, and so it was complete chaos. So what we've been trying to do as a community policing team is, we're trying to reach out to various community groups and members to see, you know, if they can possibly be willing to help us with evacuations. Like, we have CERT teams. Waimea Nalo has a CERT team, that's a Community Emergency Response Team. So we're trying to reach out to them, see if they'd be willing to, you know, help with, you know, actually driving people evacuating, helping us evacuate, because we, not only do we have to help with the evacuation, we still have to do our regular police duties and answer 911 calls, so... And that doesn't stop either, and in fact, that usually increases during emergencies. So that, if you be, if anyone's interested, you know, I recommend contacting the Waimea Nalo CERT teams. You can go to Honolulu, you know, just Google Waimea Nalo CERT, and then it'll, you can get involved that way, and that would be a great way to help during these kinds of emergencies.
Wonderful, I appreciate the response. Several of us on the Board are the Waimea Nalo CERT, so when that call comes to us, please know that we will answer that. We have an update. Real quick, a question or comment from council member? Thank you, council member.
Chair, thank you for the question. I've been getting it from a lot of Neighborhood Boards, so I just wanted HPD to know that on the October 16th, 1:00 PM Public Safety and Economy Committee meeting, we had initially wanted this in September, but the Department of Emergency Management said that they weren't ready. And I explained to the Managing Director that that was no excuse to have a hearing on lessons from the tsunami evacuation. So the reason I'm sharing that with the community is that the three agencies that will be there will be: Department of Emergency Management, Department of Transportation Services, and Honolulu Police Department. And I know for myself, I will be querying all of the Boards for questions, since I am the Vice Chair. I do know that we had a situation in Lani Kai where the roundabout had the barriers up, and the contractors left for the day. So it was our community policing team that actually had to be called, so to help with the evacuation. So so many lessons to be learned, and we're looking forward to your leadership.
Council member, thank you so much for that update. Officer Atkins, I really appreciate the time and the look-through. I know Kuieke just got jumped on at 7:15 PM. I don't know if he heard the update, but Ku, you have any response to the process, or you wanna take it up at a later time?
I could take it up at a later time, mahalo, Chair.
Understood, thank you. With no other questions before us, we appreciate your folks' presence and your service. Lieutenant Yu, thank you so much. Officer Atkins, mahalo, have a good night. We're gonna move on, gang, to our City and County of Honolulu Department of Ocean Safety. Do we have Aka here with us today? No, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Public Agency Reports, we have the Board of Water Supply with Danny here in person. What a nice surprise. Mahalo, thank you, Danny.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Danielle Nellis with the Board of Water Supply. For the month of August, there are no water main breaks to report for the Waimea Nalo area. And the announcement from the Board this evening is to imagine a day without water. We have an event that we hold yearly. This year is from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at Winward Mall on Saturday, September 20. During the event, learn about One Water Concept and why water is essential to every part of life. Explore interaction displays from over 20 city, state, and other community organizations. And we have hands-on prizes, activities, including rain barrel giveaways, and much more. For more information, go to boardofwatersupply.com/onewaterHawaii. And then I had two follow-up questions from last month. So one was, if there are any active programs in Waimea Nalo that support the watershed recharge? So I'm still pending a reply from one of the engineers at work, sorry. And then also, what is in the spray used for the fire ants? So I have this material safety data sheet, and there's a lot of things in here. There's also, there's granules versus aerosol type. I can just give this to you, there's a lot of things in here. Main, I don't even know if I should explain.
Sure, we can update it, upload it, I should say.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mahalo nui, thank you, Danielle. One second, Navin. Folks online, any members online, questions for Board of Water Supply? None, any community members online? None. Okay, comments here? Yes, sure do, sir. Introduce your name as well, please. Thank you, Navin.
Hello, my name is Navin Tagore. I am a community forester with the Division of Urban Forestry. We're actually gonna be at that event, the Day Without Water, so I just wanted to announce that we'll be giving out free trees, native trees and fruit trees. So come on by to Winward Mall. Okay, thanks.
Awesome, thank you, Navin. Danielle, I know we've gone back and forth quite a bit on various parts of the watershed, and how it showed up or not shown up in other, like, community plannings and community kind of conversations. And so, you know, we're still looking at what the East Honolulu Plan has with regards to how it's pulling water from the system. And I know we've talked to Barry some years ago about this whole system, understanding the system. It doesn't go without saying that there still needs to be, I think, a little bit of conversation between the Commission on Water Resource and Board of Water Supply in this community, which I'm sure exists in all communities. And so I don't know how that may look and what that might consist of, but I think we would welcome a little broader dive into that at some point in time, and we'll be in contact about that. Yeah, thank you, Kathleen.
Chair, specifically, what are you looking for? Because that will help us work with Barry. Just so you know, we don't take any water from this side going to the east, and I think you already know that. We do have an emergency connection, but we hardly ever use it.
Right.
And it's only really for the very end of Hawaii Kai. So anything really specific, just email me, and then we can really make sure we're honing in on what you need.
Absolutely. We appreciate that follow-up. Thank you so much for clarifying. Danielle, seeing no other questions, mahalo nui for your time and service. We appreciate your time. Thank you. And I will upload the information that was provided into, actually, I'm gonna ask Brandon to upload it for us. Thank you, Brandon, for uploading that into our Google Drive. The Google Drive is a publicly available resource that many of our documents get loaded into, so please let us know if you folks are having issues accessing that. We're gonna continue on. We have up next our representative from Mayor Rick Blangiardi's office, and so I'm gonna turn it over to the Director. We do have a few presentations that will follow the representative's report, including the Waimea Nalo Beach Park Comfort Station Design Conversation, as well as our Oahu's Exceptional Tree Program with the Division of Urban Forestry. And so I'll turn it over now to the representative. Thank you so much for being here, Director.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I apologize for not being there in person. It's been hectic, and I am still in town. We have a lot going on right now. So for the Mayor's Newsletter, the highlights that I think are of most interest to the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board, we have new members from the Honolulu Youth Commission are being sworn in at a ceremony for Honolulu Halle. This is an opportunity with the Youth Commission for young people across the island to put their names forward if they'd like to participate. Even though we have a couple of members that are being sworn in at Honolulu Halle recently, these are rotating memberships, so if there are youth in the Waimea Nalo region who would be interested in participating, please reach out to me, and I'd be happy to put them in touch with the Mayor's Office. Also, I know that this Board is very interested in our Junior Lifeguard Program, and the Oahu Junior Lifeguards just recently returned from the state championship on Maui, where they won a historic victory, which is, we are all very proud of them. Another item that's coming up is that we have a once-per-decade city charter review. So the state is governed by the state constitution, but each of the counties has their own charter, which basically acts as a county constitution. And under Oahu's charter, every 10 years, there is a Charter Commission that meets and considers from the community amendments to the charter. And so the City and County is conducting its once-in-a-decade review of the Honolulu City Charter. Community members are invited to submit proposals by November 7th, 2025. The Commission will be holding community meetings in October. Dates and times and locations are available on the Charter Commission website. So we encourage everyone to participate in the process. Go to any of the charter meetings, or also you can submit a proposal online. The Charter's website is www.honolulucitycouncil.org/charter-commission. So that's the citycouncil.org, honolulucitycouncil.org/charter-commission. We had one follow-up question from last month, which was about the installation of emus at city parks. So we put that forward to the park staff, and DPR does not currently support construction of emus within any park across the island. We recognize and respect the cultural significance of traditional emo practices, but several concerns prevent us from allowing them at every park at this time. These concerns include potential fire hazards, health and safety risks to nearby communities, possible impacts on park irrigation system, but also importantly, that digging may disturb traditional cultural sites. Traditional emo pits may be permitted in designated parks for special events, but only through an approved permitting process. Unauthorized digging, particularly for, you know, any purposes, is strictly prohibited. All requests and proposed locations must be submitted for review and must receive prior approval from the Director of DPR. We do have an emo and traditional celebration at Thomas Square, and I think we've also had some other locations, but because of the concerns about digging in any random park, we do require going through an approval process. And it would be required to be limited to specific locations. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions and do my best to answer them today, or take them back for the various agencies afterwards.
Director, thank you so much for the update. Members online, any questions for the Office of Mayor Blangiardi? Seeing none, any community members online? None, any conversations in here in public? Seeing and hearing none. Director, I really wanna appreciate and share my appreciation for that follow-up. I think a lot was shared in the reasons why we cannot do those things, and so we're gonna dive into the things that's gonna make it happen. I think it is important to note that, to your point, not every single park must have them, but to tell the community, for example, like ours, that first and foremost, you know, DPR occupies space that is ceded land and is in a place of homestead space, which is for native farm beneficiaries. It simply does not make sense that we would have so many barriers to that, which I respect and understand and support with regards to the safety, security of burials and cultural resources. But we will definitely take a look at that process. Is there anywhere that that process is documented, so we might be able to review it?
You know, there's not a process. It's, I guess, the general thing is that the rule would be no digging in parks. But you can go, any rule, or almost all of our rules are subject to the discretion of the Director. So what we would probably do is need to either create a process or work with communities to identify locations where they feel an emo may be appropriate, and then work with that community about, under what circumstances, you know, would we be issuing permits? Something that would be appropriate for that area.
Absolutely, and maybe to clarify, maybe there's a little bit of misunderstanding. It wasn't so much to allow any community member to just go and dig a hole and have an emo. It was to have parks host an emo space in parks. Is more along the lines of what we're talking about. So it would become a function of the park, similar to camping, for example, that it could be looked at from a perspective in that way. Not so much that we would just go and dig wherever we wanna dig, but... but if that changes any part of the process, we definitely want to have a conversation about it. But that's kind of where that thought is, is coming from.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I think this is one of the areas where the park staff would not have the expertise and I think welcome the community partnership in helping to, yeah, figure that out.
Beautiful, thank you. Would you have a comment? TJ, you have a comment? Would you be so kind? Yes, come take a walk. Well, TJ is coming up to have a question about that. If I might just also, I received an update from Resilient Oahu about the Climate Action Plan. So this is a draft public, draft is open for public comment through September 12. And so this is another part of the city's effort to pull community resource and community voices together. This is again, Resilient Oahu's Climate Action Plan Draft Open for Public Comment through September 12. I'm not sure if that made it onto the, the report at any point in time, but maybe that would be good, Director, in the future to have those kinds of reports too from other divisions, maybe?
Yes.
Perfect. TJ?
So my emu comment that I wanted to say is, um, there is like a legal emu that Kupu uses that might be something we want to look into. And the other thing is you still have to have the emu practitioner. So I think looking at those barriers and that practicing of culture will be excellent. We do practice emu at our home. It is open to the community. We live in the homestead. Anyone who would like to utilize our emu is more than welcome to. I have the emu hotline number that I call the fire department. They know what's going on. And our neighbors are very olu olu about that. So if that's something that you also want to learn and participate in, you're more than welcome to come to our Kakainah subdivision. We're in Kumuniu at the end. And you're more than welcome to come. In November, we usually allow our neighbors to come and put things in and it's open to anyone. So you can find us.
Mahalo. Thank you for that, TJ. Director, I see no other comments, questions or concerns, so I want to mahalo you for that report. And then would you like to invite the next speakers or you want me to just call them up?
Since you're there, uh, if you call them up, but I will stay online. And if there's any questions, I'll be available to answer them.
Appreciate it. There's a team here, so we're going to pick on Haku first. Thank you, Haku.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening. I'm Haku Millis. I'm the Director for the Department of Design and Construction. For those of you who don't know what that is, uh, we support other city agencies and departments in executing their engineering, design and construction projects. Uh, we're here tonight with our consultant, Architect Pacific, to talk some more about the Waianalo Beach Park Comfort Stations and the replacement of those two. Uh, we have a lot of information to share and a lot has gone into this design in, in coordination with Parks as our client agency. And some of you recall and participated in community events that we've had. So I will hand it off to Architect Pacific. Thank you.
Thank you. And then for the folks participating online, Haku, does your team have anyone that can log in and share this? Or do we just need to change, um, the camera view perhaps?
There should be a QR, um, to go to the website.
Just so we can have folks that, um, might not be able to visibly see.
Yeah, so there's a QR code on the boards, but also there's a, um, website has a, a link to the.
For those participating online, we will, um, get the website put into the chat. And then if you folks are able to, can anyone confirm online if you can scan that QR code from your laptop computers or? Because this is the conversation of tonight's, um, tonight's meeting or tonight's update. Yes, can. Okay, thank you so much, Jasmine, for that. We're going to leave that QR code up for a minute or so, if we can leave the camera on that for a minute, while we get started and then we'll, we'll go ahead and zoom out so folks can follow the presentation up here. Sound okay? Thank you.
So I'll start with the kind of close up stuff first and then we'll go to the kind of broader view. So, uh, the beachside comfort station A.
You can take the mic off if it's easier. Yeah, just got to use the mic. And if we, is it in the way?
Comfort Station A.
Can you move that, the post out of the way? Thank you.
So the design hasn't changed since the last presentation. But we kind of made it a little bit clearer on the drawing itself so that you can see the existing conditions with the new floor plan. The existing layout is shown in the bottom left corner. And then we show the new layout with the red dash lines as well as red solid lines. Those red lines are the existing concrete and the existing slab. So the existing slab is the dash line where the existing conversation is. And then the solid lines are the, these are the showers on the two outside. And then there's sidewalk that goes around. And then the pavilion sidewalk down to the pavilion below it. So like I said, the, the design hasn't changed. We have, uh, eight toilets, four of them are accessible. Uh, we have one, we changed, well, we did change it a little bit. We, we added an ambulatory stall, which has handrails on two sides. And then we have four changing stations, two of them are accessible. We have two lavatory sinks and two water fountains. And then we have two different storages for this one. We have the ocean safety storage at the top where they put their utility vehicle. And then we have DPR storage for some of the stuff they need on site. So hopefully it's a little bit cleaner so you guys can see where everything is. Um, on this, on this one, the, the two showers, we will have to modify the pads themselves. They're not going to go outside the pad, but to make them accessible. So they'll be a little bit flatter than they are now so that wheelchair can get onto it if necessary. On the, on this side, we have a little bit broader site plan showing where the pavilion is and the arts building and then the beginning portion of the parking lot.
Can, could we maybe move that poster over just so that it's in the same camera view?
Sure.
What's easier? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we have, we're showing the, you know, the layout of the existing buildings with the edge of the parking lot. On this one, you can kind of see where we have to adjust the walkway along the arts building that leads to the parking lot for accessibility. So we'll be doing it in place. It will not be bigger or smaller. It's going to be the same size and it just needs to, um, for, have the correct slopes for ADA compliance. So that's, uh, Comfort Station A. For Comfort Station B.
And then just for those that are participating that might not have the, the background, Comfort Station A is the Waianalo Pavilion Station. And Comfort Station B is by the halau and the va'aa.
Correct. So on this plan, um, we also made it a little bit cleaner so you can see where the existing is. So on the top is the existing plan of the, the conversation that is closed. And so on this lower one, we dashed in the existing perimeter of the existing slab for the existing comfort station. And then the red solid lines are the walkways. There are, you'll see it on the next drawing, but there are the showers that go off to the side. So now you can see that the, the wall is set in from the conversation, uh, the existing conversation line. So for this one, we have seven, um, toilets, two accessible and one ambulatory. We have four changing stations, one is accessible. And then we have the DPR storage with the room for their vehicle. And we have, um, three sinks, regular lavatory sinks. We have two water fountains and then we have a pot washing sink for the campgrounds. Then if we go to slightly larger plan, you can kind of see on this one where the existing showers are, we'll have to reconstruct it as well for ADA compliance in the same spot. Um, and then we'll have to reconstruct portions of this walkway for ADA compliance to the existing parking lot.
Just, just so we're clear, uh, we are not extending past the existing concrete pad of the current existing comfort station. So I just want to make that very clear for both comfort stations. Thanks.
Thank you.
So also for this, um, floor plan, the existing sidewalk, I don't know if you can see, it ends in the middle of a doorway. So we're either going to have to cut it back to the, uh, in front of that doorway or we'll have to extend it slightly past the other doorway to prevent tripping hazards in that area. So that'll be something we work out later, but it, it, that's the two options for that. So here's kind of a aerial view of the park and kind of the utilities that need to get to the comfort stations. So I, you know, we didn't provide this previously, um, but for Comfort Station A here, we have to provide a new backflow preventer at the, at the front of the park where the entry is to the parking lot area. Um, and then we'll trench a new, we have to trench a new, um, water line in, in the same spot as existing water line. So that, the, for regulatory reasons, we have to put in the backflow preventer. On the halau side, um, so this is where their existing power went down for the comfort station. And so we don't know what the reason is for the power being down. We have not investigated yet because we're only conceptually, um, in this phase. So the current electrical line runs from the heko handhole and it goes through the parking lot to the comfort station. So we kind of have two options currently. We haven't investigated this yet, but this is our current plans where, um, originally, I don't know if you remember, we kind of looped around the parking lot. But now we're kind of showing, coming from the pole across the street, bringing power across the street and then coming past, connecting to the halau panel so that we can pick up that line and then going to the, um, the comfort station for the electrical line. So for the water line, we also have to replace, there's an existing backflow preventer at this location, which is in bad condition, which we have to replace. And the, the existing water meter is here. So currently, the water line comes across the driveway and then goes to the conversation through the parking lot and in front of the halau. So, um, that's one option is to replace it in, in its exact place. The other option is, um, picking up the water line as it comes across, um, in front of the halau, installing a new water meter and backflow preventer and then running the line in this same trench as the electrical line. The red, the red lines are the accessible sidewalk areas.
Mahalo.
Yeah, the, yeah, so this green line is the existing line. So we would, if we were going through the parking lot, we'd go through the exact same route.
Right, so there's no additional disruption or disturbance of ground essentially, right? And then just to confirm, the electrical line is above ground or below ground?
Below ground.
Okay.
Yeah, so currently it's strung off the pole, right?
Yep.
So that's just temporary power. We, we will need to put, um, temporary power somewhere. If we run the, the new line out behind the halau, we can run the temporary power right to the halau. We don't have to put anything out here for temporarily. And then we can just connect directly to it. If we go through the parking lot, we'll have to put up a temporary because the halau panel is, goes back to the comfort station.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? Okay, um, you know, we, as I shared previously, I want to mahalo you folks for, um, doing the work. We know that any community project, um, will guarantee have questions, comments, thoughts, um, to process. And I know you folks have been very patient with our community and trying to get this right. And to be fair, it's also been some learning, I would hope, for you folks and this team and the whole process as well. You know, the history of this particular part of parcel comes with extreme and extraordinary cultural resourcing. That is why we fight the way we fight for it. It, it serves today as a, as a park, but it is a burial space. It is a ceremonial space. It is a birthing space. It is a place that is written time and time again over eons of time that captures the ma'olelo of Waianalo. Yeah, and not just Waianalo. When you understand the history of Hi'iaka's travel, she stops here at Kapua, at Muliwai Olana, which is here. And so it, it matters, right, when we have these kind of projects. It matters to the community when we, um, are not perhaps given the best opportunities to communicate those things. And to be very fair and frank, not all of those stories are intended to be shared to a broader public. And so I, I want to, you know, preface some of that with, before we go into questions, with an understanding of why we've asked for it to be redone. Because whether or not we move that concrete pad out one foot makes a difference. Yeah. And so I really want to mahalo you folks for creating time and Director for organizing and Haku and your team here for taking the considerations into place. And we know that it's a process, so I mahalo you folks for that. We didn't intend to have a, a full, heavy discussion, but I do want to ask if any of our members online has any pressing questions, comments or concerns. And then eventually we'll get back to you folks, Haku, and we'll figure out what is the next step. Yeah. Any members online? I know it's, um, kind of relatively new, so. Yes, yeah, yeah. Some folks, um, did come, they did say that they were able to access that. Uh, I know it's a lot of information to just be dumped on and then expect people to have thoughts and opinions, but I do want to provide a space for anyone who does. Members? None? Okay. We're going to move on. Community members online? Hearing none. Members here in the public? Ka'u, and I, and I do also want to acknowledge council member, you know, your fight to support our voices has not been absent from this conversation, so thank you. Sorry, Ka'u, you got to come to the mic or the mic's got to go to you and you got to be on camera and, you know, welcome to your position, honey. Welcome to your job. Mahalo for taking time.
Was looking at it. I just wanted to understand. So these are like separate bathrooms, right? They're not two separate, like women's, men's, they're all separate? Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Mahalo. Please, yeah, because that, that was a topic of discussion, yeah?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So right now, we are working with Parks to just provide individual stall bathrooms. And so, you know, for us, uh, we'll coordinate with Parks on, on what needs to be afterwards. I don't think any of that, uh, has been decided yet. Um, and so I'm sure that Laura will work with the community and with you council member. Thank you.
And if, if you didn't catch the council member's comment, that was regards to whether or not the bathrooms would be unisex or not. Perfect. Uh, I see no other conversations or questions here. Haku, are you sticking around by any chance?
Uh, I can for a bit.
A minute, just a minute of your time.
Sure, absolutely.
What is the next step? What can the community expect to cap, to happen from this point now?
So, you know, we want to continue to work with Parks, uh, who will work with the community. You know, it's very important for Laura and for us to get this right. Uh, we don't want to build something, uh, that the community is going to be unhappy with or definitely not something that is not pono incorrect, but what needs to be out here. Um, and so we will continue to work with you as, as, um, our consultant mentioned, Drake mentioned, um, there are still some things that we need to finalize. We're not going to make those final decisions. Uh, we want to make them with Parks and with the community. We want to minimize ground disruption, um, and, and just get it right. So, um, I will talk with you offline. And, uh, if anybody, if nobody else has any more questions, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you all. Bye. And if anybody, if nobody else has any more questions, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Chair. And thank you all. Bye.
Mahalo. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. We're gonna move on to Department of Urban Forestry. If we can have your team up, that would be fantastic. And mahalo nuu kaku. Thank you. Mahalo for your patience, gang. We are gonna get set up quickly here. And then I can click for you if you need. Yeah, is that helpful? Okay. Online, you folks can see that. Just thumbs up if you can. Mahalo, Kiki. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Community forestry program. I'm also a member of the Arborist Advisory Committee. And today I'm just gonna share about a program, the Exceptional Tree Program. It is a program that a lot of people don't know exists, and we're trying to change that. Space where it works. Okay, so today, gonna talk about a program overview, the nomination criteria for exceptional trees, how exceptional trees are managed, and then share with you a map of the exceptional trees on Oahu. Okay, so the Exceptional Tree Act was enacted in 1975, and that was to protect designated trees from improper pruning or unnecessary removal. This was kind of in response to a lot of, like a wave of development that people noticed that were removing iconic trees or landmark trees. And this was a way to protect those trees in the future. So exceptional trees can be on private land, public land, you know, federal, state, city, county, doesn't matter. But private trees are eligible for a $3,000 tax deduction. That's a deduction, not a credit, so I just want to make that very clear. For tree trimming services every three years. So it's every three years. So it is a kind of a small incentive, monetary incentive. But really, the major reason for this program for private landowners, for everyone, is to protect these assets of our communities, these trees. And the trees that get nominated are reviewed by the Mayor's Arborist Advisory Committee and eventually approved. And then they go to city council to actually be written into law as a protected tree. There are over 1,400 exceptional trees across Hawaii. There's about 900-ish on Oahu. And part of the reason why we're doing this outreach with the Division of Urban Forestry is because a lot of those trees were nominated back in the seventies and are starting to senes. They're starting to kind of age out. So we're gonna see our numbers go down, and we're hoping to bring them back up. Okay, so exceptional trees, if you're a community member, the most to nominate an exceptional tree, the criteria to be nominated is as follows. The, if the tree is historic or cultural or has cultural value, if it is very old, the rarity of the tree, the location of the tree, the size, the aesthetic quality, and the endemic status. That last one, endemic status, there's a little caveat there. Just because you have an endemic tree does not mean it's going to be exceptional. It needs to be kind of a unique tree. Like any lomaia is not going to be necessarily exceptional. But if you have a really amazing lomaia that's huge, been there a long time, could be a landmark in the community, that could qualify as an exceptional tree. So if you are interested, you can scan that QR code. That'll take you to our website. I also have nomination forms here and some brochures here as well. You can email them to duff@honolulu.gov or mail them to our address. Okay, going forward. So this is where it gets a little tricky with the Exceptional Tree Program, where a lot of people kind of get disincentivized to do it. So in order to prune or trim an exceptional tree, it needs to be done by a qualified arborist. And I'm saying qualified arborist, not a certified arborist. Anyone can become a certified arborist. I can become a certified arborist without being a practicing arborist, tree trimmer. So a qualified arborist, what that means is that when you want to prune your tree, you need to submit a pruning application, which gets reviewed by the City Division of Urban Forestry. And then our arborists will look and see who your arborist actually is, if they are reputable arborist. And if there are new arborists to the scene, we will actually meet that arborist in person and make sure that they're using good practices. Removals are really only permitted if the tree is determined by the city to pose an immediate risk to public safety or public or personal safety. And exceptional trees are protected regardless of the property owner. So if you exceptionalize a tree on your property and then sell that, your, your house, whoever buys your house is now going to have that exceptional tree and be responsible for that exceptional tree. Okay. Now, this is a kind of the fun part of the presentation, I guess. So this is the exceptional tree map, and kind of hard to see for us here in person, but what do you notice about this map? Because you can see, all the little dots are exceptional trees. Kind of hard to see, yeah. I don't know, can you, can you zoom? Okay, okay, okay. So let's, let's zoom in on, on Waimanalo. This, yeah, just like that side. So what do we notice here? None. None. The vast majority of our trees are in urban Honolulu and Schofield. So we want to change that because as we, as we know, like everyone in this room knows, that we have incredible trees in Waimanalo. We have incredible trees on the Waimea coast. We have incredible trees in all of our communities that deserve to be protected. And we want to change this map so that it actually reflects our reality. And that there could be, you know, homeowners that could be taking care of these trees properly and receiving a small tax incentive as well. So today, just want to share that with you all. Let's try to change that and receive more nominations. I do have some nomination forms here, or you can visit our website and fill the nomination out online and just send it to us. Okay. Are there any questions, anything like that?
Mahalo, Navin. Thank you so much for that update presentation. Members online questions for Department of Urban Forestry? Seeing none. Any public members online? Seeing none. Community members present? Please come to the mic. Thank you.
Mahalo. Two questions. The tax deduction.
Sorry, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know people know who you are.
Aloha. My name is Gil Riviere. I'm from Waialua. Thank you. So two questions. Is the tax deduction against state income tax or is it against real property tax? Or what is it deduction of? And the second question is, is there any mechanism for delisting a tree? Or is that a forever decision?
Great questions. Mahalo.
Great questions. Thank you. So I honestly, I gotta research this. I'm pretty sure it's the income tax, but ever since I've been here, I've never actually run into people who have even taken advantage of that tax incentive, to my knowledge. Very little people actually go through the process of taking advantage of that tax incentive. It's a kind of, honestly, a little bit of a burdensome process, which we are currently looking at with the Arborist Advisory Committee to amend. And hopefully kind of increase the incentives for, for private property owners. Sorry about that. But I believe it's staying up that. And the second question, to delist a tree, it is tough. It's, it's admittedly very tough. So the, if you want to delist a tree, it really should pose an immediate threat to public safety or property. If it's, you know, got huge branches, gonna fall on your tree, it's senescing, it's not in good shape, then of course the city will allow it to be removed. If you just don't want to deal with the exceptional tree, that's, that's too bad. It's gotta have a good reason.
Mahalo for that. There's a question online. If this will be shown at Kahalu'u and Kaniohi neighborhood boards as well?
Yes, I have requested to, to present to those boards as well.
Kapi, thank you. Any other questions, folks in person? Navin, thank you so much. You, you mentioned that there's this Arborist Council Committee. Is that a public meeting? And who does that facilitate through?
Yes, it is a public meeting. It is facilitated through the Division of Urban Forestry. I am the urban forestry representative on that committee. And actually, our next meeting is gonna be next Monday, September 15th, or this coming Monday, September 15th. And that will be from 10 to noon. It is viewable via Zoom. It is a hybrid option, so you can't come in person. We only have a couple extra seats available, so Zoom is kind of recommended.
And where would someone get that information, like ahead of time, like the agenda and stuff?
Yes, so the agenda is posted on the Exceptional Tree Program website that is within the Division of Urban Forestry.
Mahalo. Thank you so much. I, I know we could spend quite a bit of time, Navin, on this, and I think a program like this would have helped save some trees that the city had taken out.
I agree.
We appreciate your time and your service. Thank you so much for being here. Mahalo. We're gonna move on, members. We have the State Department of Transportation at this time with Mr. Abbe. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chor Kani and members of the Waimanalo Neighborhood Board. Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highways. At last month's meeting, I mentioned about the pothole near the entrance of Ola'mana Golf Course and overgrown vegetation in the meeting area between Kumuhau and Farming Grove. I have to report that our maintenance crew passed the pothole and cut back the overgrowth. During the July meeting, I mentioned some graffiti and some overgrown vegetation from private property that is slowly covering the speed limit sign near Hihi Manu Street. Our maintenance crew removed the graffiti and cut back the overgrowth. At our June's meeting, I mentioned the two pedestrian crossing signs with the rectangular rapid flashing beacons were damaged at the Kini Street intersection. During my field inspection last week, I noticed our maintenance crew finally installed the new pedestrian crossing signs, but we are still waiting for the new rectangular rapid flashing beacons to arrive from the manufacturer. So I'll have to report back at a future meeting. During my field investigation this last week, I noticed some overgrowth. A homeless encampment on the Makai side of 41-692 Kalanora Highway, and some trash behind our guardrail near Nalu Street. Work with our homeless coordinator to address the homeless encampment and our maintenance crew to adjust the overgrown and trash. I want to thank Chair Kani for his August 26 letter and the board's report on the concern from Board Member Ralston about the utility pole near Wailea Street and the resident at 41668 Kalanora Highway who requested to convert the existing crosswalk at Nalu Street to a raised crosswalk, a new beach access opening in the existing guardrail at the Nalu Street crosswalk, reflected delineating markers at the concrete curb near Nalu Street, and additional new parking signs on the Makai side of Kalanora Highway to discourage more from parking on the Makai's shoulder and allowing the highways to immediately address the shoreline erosion problem across Nalu Street. I'll work with our support offices and district maintenance and report back at a future meeting. This slide shows a proposed improvements to Board Member Ralston's concern at Wailea Street. Talking to Board Member Ralston, he who has requested for another new OM3-R marker installed on the other side of the utility pole. So we'll work with our traffic branch to see if we can justify installing another marker. So if the board does not have any other comments, I'll work with our district maintenance to implement the proposed improvements. And finally, I want to thank Board Member Ralston for his August 11 email, especially the pictures shown in this slide concerned the unpaved shoulder on the Makai side of Kalanora Highway from Tinker Road to the bus stop near Ina'olee Street and the non-existing crosswalk marking at Tinker Road. During my field investigation last week, pictures in this slide confirmed Board Member Ralston's concern about the Makai's side shoulder and the non-existing crosswalk markings at Tinker Road. But during a previous neighborhood board meeting back in February, I mentioned we were planning to install new speed tables on both sides of Tinker Road intersection, which will include new crosswalk markings at the intersection. This slide of our draft work order that showed the new crosswalk markings and new signs prohibiting pedestrians from walking on the Makai's shoulder. Therefore, we may not need to widen the paved shoulder on the Makai side between Tinker Road and the bus stop near Ina'olee Street. I'm waiting for response from our traffic branch and district office on the status of the new speed tables and pavement tripping, so we'll need to report back at a future meeting. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Casey, thank you so much for that update. Very informative. Members online questions for Department of Transportation? Seeing and hearing none. Members, community members online? Seeing and hearing none. Community members here? Department of Transportation, seeing none. Mr. Abbe, I just have one follow-up if I might on one of the slides. There was, trying to think which slide it was specifically. You know, I'll, I'll go back and look at it at another time, Mr. Abbe. And I'll send you an email just to clarify. I think one of the questions that I might have, I, I forgot which, which slide I was going to reference. But I do appreciate you presenting this evening and your support in getting the information updated for us as well. So mahalo for your time.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Members, we're gonna move on. I want to mahalo the Director, Director Thirian. Thank you so much for posting the updates and providing the responses at this time. We're gonna move onto the agenda. There are agenda item number four. We're gonna go ahead and defer since we are in consideration at this point in time to change the sub-districts to at-large. So we're gonna, that's gonna go before the commission, and so I'm, I'm gonna defer that pending the, the commission's decision. And we'll move on to the education reports. I'm gonna ask if there's anyone from Blanch Pope Elementary School? Seeing and hearing none. Kapi, can you share on behalf of Malama Honua? And are you gonna share the slides? I just want to clarify because I, I have slides that she sent me as well, but.
Okay, I didn't check my email.
Great. Why don't you check your email? And I'm gonna share the Waimanalo Elementary and Intermediate update, if that's okay. So I'll do that. Okay, moving on. All right, folks can see this. This is the Waimanalo Elementary and Intermediate School update provided by their principal, Jamie Dela Cruz. So we'll share this on his behalf this evening. Waimanalo School has, like everyone else, come back into session, and so their vision, mission is listed here. Their belief is also listed that students, staff, and parents and the community share responsibility to advancing the school's mission. He just wanted to make sure folks are aware of what the vision and mission look like as a means of focusing their attention and work this, this particular school year. How we show up at Waimanalo or Lavena is how we act and behave every day. It's our way of life, and it's built on four strong pillars. The pillars are pelina, ma'ka'ua, or readiness, lo'kahi, and unity, and then kuli'ana and responsibility. We'll also up this, update this and upload it into the Google, the Google Drive so that folks can read it in more detail. But he wants to represent the pillars of practice called loina. Waimanalo Elementary School has a school-community council, and there is space for shared decision-making between stakeholders, stakeholders, admin, teachers, staff, students, and community members to improve student achievement. And you'll, you'll see some of the updates that's been provided there, and it is on the first Thursday of every month, and welcomes all folks to participate. Seven key practices, as demonstrated here, enhance and enrich learning opportunities, rigorous community-connected classroom instruction, culture of belonging, safety and care, and integrated systems of support, powerful student and family engagement, collaborative leadership, and community involvement and partnerships. This is an update on some of the systems that they're dealing with right now. So there is quite a bit of stuff that is taking place on the school level that is represented with regards to success measures and with regards to overall school, just how the school functions, which are available to folks to participate. Some additional information here on budgeting and timeline. He wanted to make sure that we were aware that the school has a shortfall as far as student enrollment, and that also impacts the amount of dollars that are received by the school. And so he was very aware to share. He wanted to make sure that he could share that there is quite a bit that could be impacted given the current deficit that is being felt. And so again, inviting folks to participate. There will be a website change for folks to see, and part of it is cost control and working on that to make sure that it is intuitive and workable for all folks. And they were able to participate with the humanitarian daily ration boxes distribution. This took place this morning, or this afternoon, I should say, and donated or distributed 336 boxes ahead of Hurricane Kiko. There is a few left if folks are interested here. I do have a few that we were able to pick up. And so if there's any community members that were unable to get there during the afternoon, we have access to a few if you're interested in that, then we mahalo them for taking that leadership. And with that, we will bring that to a close and mahalo them for their service. Kapi, I want to turn it over to you. Do you, sorry, do you need the slides?
Yeah, can you share for me?
Sure. Okay, this is for Ma'ala Mahonua Public Charter School. Here we go. Go ahead.
Mahalo. Okay, so for this month, our Olelo No'ao, for our schoola, is E'Oni Pa'akako, which means to be steadfast, established, firm, resolute, and determined. So just a few updates. Next slide, sorry. So within the past month, we had our Papa Eight, their Va'a camp, which happened over three days. So they camped out at Ka'alaya, which is Kanihoi's, I guess, their site. They camped out for three days, two nights and three days. So this is just some of the activities they were doing. They did a Kuikalo and every morning getting up bright and early with the sun. Okay, next, sorry. And also our Papa Seven Junior Lifeguard Training, Lifeguard Training. They did a beach training and also pool training. And just some important dates, we have our Piko Wa'ke'a on September 19th. Student Lab Conference is September 29th through October 2nd, and then our Fall Break, October 3rd through the 10th. So, any questions?
Mahalo, Kapi. Thank you so much for that update and congratulations on another successful programming. Mahalo. We're going to move on, gang, to Hui Ma'ala Mahonua. Hearing none. We will move on to Windward Community College with our Chancellor here in person. Chancellor, thank you for being here. Oh, wow.
Aloha, Ma'akako. I've only got one item of business tonight, and it is our Paniolo BBQ coming up on Saturday, September 20th, at Windward Community College on the Great Lawn. I want you to know I've had this hat for over a decade. I didn't just buy it for the barbecue. I'm not that, like, closer.
What about the boots, though? What about the boots?
The boots are about two years old.
Okay.
I'm rural. I just don't look it. So, anyway. Saturday, September 20th, it's going to be super fun, 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM. We are going to have roping, horse rides, petting zoo. There's going to be a mechanical bull unless Office of Management shuts that down in the next two weeks, which I'm hoping not. We were going to have a Texas Hold'em poker tournament, but that got shut down today by UH Foundation. So there'll be demonstrations, and there will be poker, but it won't be anything even close to gambling, of course. We would never do that. There's going to be races, three-legged races. We're going to have cornhole, horseshoes, authentic. We got competition-style sets. And lots of educational things to do as well. It's going to be a really fun day for the community. Everything is free except the barbecue plate, which is a pre-sale order. I'll pass these out. There's QR codes on it for the barbecue plate, and there'll be a country store. Should be super fun, and we'd love for the whole community to be there so we can celebrate. It's our first big event since the pandemic. Yeah.
Congratulations, Mahaloonui, for being here. We really appreciate the information. We'll also upload that into the invitation into the Google Drive. So, thank you so much, Chancellor.
Mahalo, and I got stickers, too.
Perfect. Appreciate it. All right, gang, we're going to move on. University of Hawaii, Sitar, San Tijuli Ma'An. Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to Hawaii Job Corps, Auntie Julie. Thank you so much for making time.
Aloha, Julie Dugan, Hawaii Job Corps. Just one announcement and one acknowledgement. My announcement is, as I've stated in the last couple of neighborhood boards, Congress has told Department of Labor that they are not closing down the centers. So we are fully funded, and we want to spread the word that we're open for enrollment. We conduct tours every Thursday at 9:00 AM. You can RSVP through me at 808-227-9686. We'd love to show you around the campus and see what we have to offer to the local youth. I also want to acknowledge our Councilwoman, Esther Kiana. She recently acknowledged Hawaii Job Corps for everything that we do for the youth through our education and career training programs. This happened last week at the full city council meeting. We had staff there who have dedicated between 10 and 40 years of service to the program. And we also had students there that were acknowledged. So mahalo, Esther, for you and your fabulous staff that made that happen. Well, it was a very, it was a great morale booster for our staff. As you know, a couple months ago, they thought the program was shutting down and that all of their hard work was going away. And so it was a great morale booster for them, but also for our students. We brought students, one from each of our career and technical training areas, and they were very impressed. One of them told me, oh, my goodness. I never thought I'd be in front of the city council acknowledging everything that I've done. So mahalo, Esther.
Auntie Julie, thank you so much for the positive report. We really appreciate the things that you folks do there. Thank you. Members, we're going to move on to the Waianae Health Center with Danny. Is that you or is Jasmine? Jasmine, okay.
Aloha. Thank you for having me. I have one quick announcement, and then we're going to get to the wonderful Danny. So I just wanted to share, and I'm putting it in the chat, that we're having our annual meeting on September 25th from 7:00 to 7:30. Everybody is welcome to attend. We're just giving updates about the Health Center, the President's Message, Treasurer's Report, and the state of the organization. Everybody is welcome if you'd like to join us.
Thank you so much for that invitation. Mahalo. Hi, welcome. Thank you, Danny.
Aloha, Mahalakako. My name is Dani Arias. I'm the Community Services Supervisor over across the street at Waianae Health Center. I'm eighteen years this month. We, thank you. We wrote for, to OHA last year. We were awarded for a three-year grant for $500,000 for, thanks, for rent and mortgage assistance for Native Hawaiians. That was a goal that we met and we're so proud of. So I'm spearheading that project at the Health Center, and that is set to, it has begun already. We've been taking applications, and this is for currently homeless or those who are at risk of homelessness, and they have to show proof of Hawaiian ancestry. So we're doing this for the next three years, so it's set to end. This program started and set to end in May 2028. So that is for both rent and mortgage. So we're going to outreach events, we're going to our DHHL chairs and to everyone in the community. We're going to the schools to get our parents involved and updated and so that they're aware, and working with other communities as well and community leaders so that our work can get out about our program to those who are most in need of this resource. So I've put some flyers here along with my business card. Also, please feel free to call the Waianae Health Center. We can do intake over the phone. We don't have anything online right now, but in person, we encourage everyone to try to make it down. If not, we have ways and means to work electronically through email to get you an application. We can mail it to you. You can send someone for you. We will work with you to make this process easy for you. So there's one program that's open that we got awarded through OHA, okay? But we also have one for those who are non-native. So we have two programs open, one for Hawaiians and one, another program that serves those who are non-native as well. So two open programs that are running right now, okay? So please refer anyone that you think is eligible for this or that needs help, and we're happy to do an intake with them. And if not, then we're happy to refer them to our partners that we're working with, that we've been working with over the years. Not a lot of people know that we do rent and mortgage at a health center, but our outreach team is pretty active in the community, and we try to listen to the needs of our people. And that's why we wrote for this, and we're so blessed, and we appreciate the support from OHA and supporting us in our community and our goals to uplift our Lahui. And any questions?
Thank you so much, Danny, for that, and congratulations for your folks' work and your ten years. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
I don't see any questions in the chat, and anyone here? Councilmember? Councilmember? Sorry. We got to give you a mic.
First of all, I'm a bit shocked. This is the first time you guys are having this program? This is unbelievable because there's great need, and we get plenty of phone calls with regard to the non-native. Does that include, I'm assuming you have citizens and US nationals from American Samoa, but do you allow for citizens of the freely associated states of Micronesia? Oh, my God. Okay. And then we're going to connect with you. We'd like to connect you to a lot of nonprofit organizations that serve these communities. Okay, I'm all excited.
Sorry, thank you so much. So they have to be Oahu residents, lease, proof of mortgage. They have to have income, of course, ID. We do budgeting with them in the office or online through Zoom. We're working closely with Waianae Shelter, Auntie Blanche, IHS, all of our teams that we've been doing outreach with. So, yes, so happy to link up.
Mahalo. Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember. Congratulations again to you folks, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Jasmine, is that good for you?
That's it. Thank you so much, Danny, and thank you for having us.
Mahalo, Jasmine. Thank you for making time and thank you for your service. Okay, gang, we're going to move on. Do we have anyone here from the Waianae Homestead Association? Hearing none, Bellows Air Force Station? Hearing none, Marine Corps Base Hawaii?
Hi, aloha. Good evening.
Hi, Kristi. Thank you so much for making time to be here. The time is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the community. I apologize that I'm not there in person. I also apologize that my camera can't come on. If I turn it on, I will lose connectivity. A couple of updates. We've been busy this summer. As you folks know, we had the Kopiko Kanu Regatta, which hosted over 3,000 to 4,000 individuals to come onto the installation. A couple of weeks after that, we had the airshow, which had approximately 80,000 open base people coming onto the base. In addition, we have had great progress with our new Upia Pond Hui. We have had two workdays, one on the 23rd of August and another one coming up on October 4th. We're really satisfied with how quickly it has started to move over this past year. One other quick note I wanted to make, we are in the process of updating our noise complaint access. So they're redoing the website, and I'm going to have a, like a postcard to bring to the next neighborhood board, or I'll be able to email it to you because it should be done this week. So if anybody has any noise complaints, they'll be able to quickly access the form through a QR code and fill in as much details as possible to give information that we'll be able to, whether it be air traffic or whether it be different types of training, then we'll be able to find out who it was that was training and answer any questions that the community may have. And a couple of updates from questions that you folks had last month. You had asked about a follow-up on the dune restoration. So I've sent out a request from our Environmental Department, and they have not gotten back with me. I know several of them have been on leave, and they're also going through some changes in the staffing. People are moving on, and they're in the process of hiring some new staff. One of the other questions you had asked was clarification on the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency that has been on the installation. And so I wanted to just clarify that the main purpose of the ICE program being on the installation is to support the installation in screening of visitors and verifying identification and preventing undocumented individuals onto the installation. So let me clarify that real carefully. We get a lot of foreign visitors. I have two foreign visitors with groups of over 30 coming in the next two weeks. And in order for them to come onto the installation, we have to do their full background check. The installation itself does not have an extensive database to support that, and that is the support that the Immigration Enforcement Agency is providing to us. It is expediting a lot of these visit requests. Another visit that we had last week was the Governor of Okinawa and, of course, his staff. So there's a lot of processes that occur, and we needed the additional support. So I hope that that helps to clear that up. If there's any other questions, that's all I have.
Casey, thank you so much for that. Members online, questions? None. Any community members? Anyone present? The question comes from the council member. Is this for Marine Corps Base or Bellows, too? And I think that's along the same lines for me, council member, is does this have the potential to be at every base in Hawaii?
I would not have that information. I can ask, but I wouldn't be able to speak at other installations, about other installations.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think to council member's point, this obviously caught quite a bit of people by alarm and alarmed a lot of people, I should say, by surprise. And so I think the more information that can be shared where possible is really appreciated. I don't think, Kristi, I don't think the concern goes away. You know, that was raised about what we've been seeing as a result of ICE being present in places. But certainly, we do appreciate you folks clarifying that their role will be restricted to the base.
Yes.
Perfect. I appreciate the time and mahaloonui for your service, and we look forward to conversations in the future.
Thank you. Good to see you, folks. Have a good evening.
Mahalo. Moving on to Hawaii National Guard. Hearing none. All right, we're going to move into our resident and community concerns. We mahalo those that are presenting for your patience as we move through the first parts of the agenda. We're going to start with Hawaii Bicycling League, Walk, Bike, and Drive. We have in-person a representative here. Hi. Hi, Paula. How are you? Great. Great. Did I get your video link? I believe we did. There are approximately twenty. Okay, I'm going to share this. Is it just a click and run right through? Is that okay? Okay. Okay, let's just check.
Hawaii Bicycling League's Walk Bike Drive presentation encourages road users to drive with aloha. The Walk Bike Drive Program is funded by an H dot grant to highlight the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety on Hawaii's roads. Whether we walk, bike, or drive, safety is everyone's responsibility. The Vulnerable Road Users Law is part of a broader effort to enhance safety on Hawaii's roadways by addressing the risks faced by those traveling outside of motorized vehicles, such as pedestrians and cyclists. So far in twenty twenty-five, the entire state has more than doubled its traffic fatalities over twenty twenty-four. The average number of traffic deaths from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-four included twenty-eight pedestrians, nearly twenty-eight motorcycles and mopeds, four bicycles, and nearly forty-four motor vehicles. Whether on foot, on a bike, or in a vehicle, commuters are a traveling ohana. We recognize license plates, stickers, and company logos. We merge with a wave, or better yet, a shocker. And when there is a crash, we learn just how close we are to each other. Here are a few things to keep in mind when sharing the road with cyclists. Respect the green bike boxes that gives bicyclists a head start on a narrow section to reach the bike lane. Remember, when in a crash, the cyclist will always be more vulnerable, no matter who was right legally. When passing, allow for three feet between your vehicle and a cyclist, even if it means waiting a few seconds to do it safely. Share when you see sharrows, which are placed where cyclists cannot safely drive on the shoulder of the road. What are cyclists telling you? Understand the road signals used by cyclists. Left arm pointed down or right arm behind back means a cyclist is stopping. Left arm outstretched means a cyclist needs to switch to the left lane or to make a left turn. Left arm pointed up or right arm outstretched indicates cyclist is making a right turn. At a recent NOAA Hurricane Awareness Meeting, HBL Executive Director Travis Consul provided another reason bicycles make sense. During and following an emergency weather event, a human-powered bicycle is most reliable, especially if power outages persist, the internet is down, and roads are blocked to motor vehicles. Everyone has the right to be safe on Hawaii's roads. This precept in Hawaiian law originated with King Kamehameha the first in seventeen ninety-seven. The law was added to the state constitution in nineteen seventy-eight. Please kukua, make the right decisions. Driving with aloha means everyone has a great day. Please send your comments or questions to Walk Bike Drive Coordinator Paula Bender at paula@hawai hbl.org. Mahalo.
Thank you so very much uh for that share. We'll turn it over to you. Thank you. You need some help there?
Hello? I can hold it like that. Everybody hear me okay? Okay. Um what we want to emphasize um the Vulnerable Road Users Law. If you are in a vehicle, truck, bus, van, you are protected by tons of metal. But if you are a bicyclist or a pedestrian, you're the vulnerable user of the of the law of the roads. Well, guess who else falls into that category? Uh e-bikes, mot- motorcycles, um scooters, e-scooters and e-bikes. So I don't know if you've seen them um performing out on the roads, but if you're in your car, um I know I feel vulnerable when I see them starting to um act um kind of crazy and reckless. Because I know that if I hit that person, I will be facing uh more a higher penalty and um fines and other considerations like that. So um when it comes to road safety, I'm here back in back in May when I got this assignment. It was all about three elements, drivers, riders, and walkers. And now we it's just uh we have to face the reality that there's so much more going on on our roads now and that we all need to take breath, calm down, um be courteous, be friendly. Uh if only we could develop a a nicer um culture of driving. But I know that we also have to be careful because there are is always gonna be someone who doesn't wanna play by the rules. So we had our fifty-ninth fatality yesterday in um County Oi. A woman who was fifty riding a riding a moped, had her helmet, was rear-ended um by a driver in a car. And the driver behind that person tried to pass him on the right and he hit her too. And so calm down, nobody needs to be in that much of a hurry. And that's that's all I have. Any question?
Thank you so much for that uh information. I see a hand up. I just wanna clarify. Taylor, is your hand for Bicycling League? Taylor Campbell?
Yeah, I I just wanted to make a comment if I could.
Sure.
Um super important to be mindful on the roads. I just wanted to bring up the comment that a vast majority of the bicycling activity we get in the backroads near the farm lots are not commuting to and from. It's people biking for pleasure. Um and I've had to have interactions multiple times with some bikers stopping on the side and reaching over fences and grabbing fruits uh from farms and um also, you know, people on their fancy bikes and their catching kind of attitudes and I just wanna also maybe bring up the topic of conversations that a lot of people come to the backroads and with a sense of entitlement, but I don't always see them giving back to these areas at the same time. And I just wanted to raise that point that we have a lot of community days. And so if people are coming outside of the community, use these roads for their pleasure, maybe they could also give back to the roads at the same time. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your comment. I don't see any other hands up at this time, but we wanna mahalo you, Paula, for hitting two neighborhood boards in the same night. Look at you. Thank you very much for your your service and um the opportunity to hear from you folks. Appreciate it. Mahalo. Uh we're gonna move on. Do we have anyone here from Project Dana? Okay, hearing none. Uh we're gonna bring up uh Hawaii Food Bank Mobile Pantry. And then followed that with uh Kamana Nui Gondola Project, so. Kim, thank you for being here.
Aloha, thank you for having me. Um I'm gonna try to share. It will not show me.
You you may have to select the appropriate window when you do press share. It might give you a
Yeah, it doesn't. Um usually it gives me my window. Mission contact meeting. Share, I did that.
Well, why don't you? I mean, I'm happy to help you if you wanna email that over to me. And if you don't mind, maybe we'll take the gondola conversation and then we can come back to you.
Okay. I'll email it right now. To where would I email it to?
Kimiona Kane, K-I-M-E-O-N-A, kane@gmail.com. Think you have that. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And and get that set up and helpful um eh eh when we take um that that up, if you don't mind.
Mahalo.
Perfect. Okay, we're gonna bring uh this conversation to the Kamana Nui Gondola Project. Um I believe you're here as the representative of the neighborhood board, is that correct?
I'm here as board chair.
This is the chair, Kathleen Pahinui, North Shore Neighborhood Board.
Yeah, thank you. And with I need tonight I have uh former Senator Gil Riviera. Thank you. So I'm gonna go pretty quickly. I did give copies. We have copies of the presentation or resolution. I did email you, Chair, the presentation, so it can be uploaded into your Google Drive. Basically, what we want to talk about tonight is a foreign developer from Canada wants to build basically an amusement park on the side of our Yani Mountain Range below Mount Ka'ala. Mount Ka'ala is very sacred. It's uh you hear uh we have La'ole and Meli about it. And for us on the North Shore, this just seems like it's heva. It really is for us. Um they somehow got a conditional use permit minor back in twenty nineteen. And then they've come back to DPP with a modification just recently. And they had a number of conditions they were supposed to meet of which pretty much they haven't met any of them. One of the big ones was on page four of the presentation. Uh the top one, it says fifty percent or more of the site must be in agri- active agriculture. It is not. They were doing a a reforestation project near the top and they basically have come back and said, oh, this is too hard. We don't wanna do this now. And so we just, we wanna do something else. We're not gonna do it. So what they did do is they increased the amount of cattle that le- that they were doing on the land, but they leased the cattle. They don't own the cattle. The guy lea- the guy just rents the land. So my friend and vice-chair, who's also on tonight, Raquel Chu, who's uh for our board, she's a rancher, she's a cattle person. And she's talked to this gentleman, she's made it clear. She said, you do understand that he can kick you out anytime. It is not a for sure thing that they would continue doing cattle. If you look at the presentation, you look at the various um drawings of the project, they want a parking lot for about three hundred cars and tour buses. If this is just an adjunct agritourism and accessory to agriculture, why do you need a parking lot for that much parking? That he wants to bring over sixteen hundred people every day to this. This is not ag- this is not about agriculture. This is about tourism. He wants to put Ko'oloa on the North Shore. We have Ko'oloa. We don't need another Ko'oloa. And by the way, every time Ko'oloa does something, John Morgan has to show up at the neighborhood board and tell them what he's doing. He doesn't get a free ride. These people, they came once, said, oh, we'll come back, and we never saw them again. So for us, they've disrespected the community, they're disrespecting the culture, they're disrespecting the environment, they have not been able to get anything from DOH because it's rocky, hilly terrain. And I mean, it's not appropriate. They don't have a nat- there's natural water on there. They don't own it. It's owned by Dole. They don't have access to it. So how are they gonna provide water? They wanna put a cafe up there. Why do you need a cafe? If this is just an agent to a agriculture. So we've pulled together on one of the last pages, you'll see we have well over twenty different eight groups and agencies or groups that have signed on to us. We have our board, of course, unanimously oppose the project. Mililani Neighborhood Board opposes the project. Diamond Head called me up and they oppose the project. We're going to Mililani Ma'aka and Wahiu'a in a couple of weeks. Uh Yani uh Yani and Nanakuli are holding a special joint meeting to discuss this issue. And we will continue reaching out to everybody. And so I'm very grateful, uh Chair Kane, that you allowed us to come tonight and share this with you. But we're asking your board to oppose this project. We did give you a copy of a resolution. Your uh do whatever you want with it, make up your own. Uh we just asked that you oppose this project because our goal is is hopefully DPP will not support the modification. And they will tell them, listen, you need a major. This is not a minor project. This is a major project, not a minor project. And we also want to show the city council. And so thank you, uh council member, that the community at large, not just the North Shore opposes this project, that we I have not talked to a single person on this island that thinks this is a good idea. They all are like, you've got to be kidding. Again, we don't need a gondola ride. We don't need zip lines along Mount Ka'ala and the Yani Range. We have a couple already. We don't need anymore. So that is my um story. I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh Gil, did I leave anything out? No, thank you.
Thank you. Mahalo. Chair, thank you so much for making time to be here and to share this really important update with us as well as uh Senator. Thank you so much for making time this evening. Uh members, we are gonna be adding this to our agenda for business um next month, uh which will invite uh a conversation as well around that. And then we'll pass around the uh proposed resolution uh for consideration as well. But are there any immediate questions that anyone has um for the chair while she's here?
And we'll be back next month too.
Mahalo. I don't see any hands up at this point in time. Uh any members of the public online? Hearing none. Any members here in person? Hearing none. Chair, thank you so much for making time and for all the handouts and information. We really appreciate your folks' leadership here. Uh we're gonna go back. Kim, were you able to send that over or you got it working?
No, I s- I she should have got it. No.
You know, I I don't see it. Let me check in some other email um emails. Let's see, no. I I don't see it in mine. I apologize. I don't see it in my um updates box either. Let me check spam. I apologize. I don't I don't have it.
Okay. So no, why? It just will not let me share.
Well, at we if it is it slides? Is that why?
Yeah, it's slides. It's oh wait, hold on. Okay, let me see if I can get in this way.
Hey, there we go.
Might have got somewhere. I'm so sorry. I'm totally not. Um okay, is that, yes.
Thank you, folks. Drive safely.
Okay, here we go. I should be here. All right. Everybody can see that?
We can see your inbox. Or your folder. We're looking at your folders and your lists, your drop list of shared documents.
I actually have it open. Why is it showing me showing you guys that? This is what you're seeing. What about now?
There's nothing shared right now.
Oh my goodness. I am so sorry.
No, don't apologize. We why don't we just go ahead with an oral part of it and maybe just go through the slides? And then we can figure out a way to get the slides posted later for the community to see.
Perfect. Sounds great. Sounds great. Okay. So aloha, I am with the Hawaii Food Bank. My name is Kim Bartonstein. I've been with the food bank for um seventeen years. Um the food bank is located in Mapuna Puna and um we've been around since about nineteen eighty-three. Um our organization receives, inspects, sorts, stores, and distributes food into community in partnership with over two hundred agency partners um that we have that do all of the work for us. Um our mission is to nourish ohana today and work to end hunger tomorrow. And we work off of four pillars. Um cultivating strong partnerships in community, not only with our agency partners and our affiliate food banks um that we have on Maui and um the Big Island or Island of Hawaii. Um but to collaborate with other partners and communities so that we're stronger in community. Um we advance nutrition and health, so we're really committed to being the healthy option for those um experiencing experiencing food insecurity. And we wanna be a lead in disaster response, so we've been really focused on um collaborating with our agency partners and creating um community hubs within communities across the island of Oahu and Kauai. And just working with our agency partners to make sure that if there's um times of crisis or disaster, that we're gonna be able to stand up quickly um to help community. And we're also um just looking at new ways to combat hunger. So we um are doing SNAP now, so um just looking at root causes of hunger and other ways with that we can incorporate wraparound services into the work that we do with wraparound services into the work that we do with our community partners so we can help the community and strengthen the community. The reason why I wanted to present tonight was to talk about our new mobile pantry truck, which we're really excited. The mobile pantry truck is designed to expand access to nutritious food in rural and underserved areas across the island. And we're super excited to get that launched. We'll be blessing our mobile pantry truck this Friday at Key Project. And we're super excited. So if anybody wants to come, we'll be doing that at 8:30 in the morning. But really, the truck is really meant to give access to people that are not able to get to food distributions easily. We do have agencies that we work with in Waianalo area like DCIA, Dynamic Compassion and Action, Huhima Aina with Auntie Blanch, RISE. We're at Waianalo Inter and Elementary, or Elementary and Inter School, and we're at Blanch Pope. You know, we've also done the SFSP, the Seamless Food Service Program, this summer in partnership with DCIA. So we're in community, but we really wanted a way where we could have people access food easier. The mobile pantry truck is kind of like a little shopping grocery store. People will be able to access the sides of the truck and pick and choose what they want to take from the truck. So it's a client choice type pantry. So we're just really excited. And if anybody would like to partner with us, we are working with Waianalo Health Center right now, so we're super excited about that. But if anybody else in community wants to work with us, you can contact me directly, kim@hawaiifoodbank.org, and I'll make sure that Kimiouna has the slides that he can update with my information. But thank you.
Kim, thank you so much, and congratulations on this next step in your folks' service to communities. We appreciate your folks' work. Mahalo. We're going to move on, members, and I will get that information posted into the Google Drive. So thank you so much. Kim, mahalo for your time and patience. We're going to ask if there's any others who are here to provide public updates, concerns, or reports. Did somebody unmute? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on. We bring up our elected officials, starting with our council member, Esther Kiaaina, and her team. Thank you so much for being here.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. I know I announced last month, but in person, we have my new community coordinator, Ka'u Kalama Ohello. And so I'm welcoming her to my office and to being here tonight. First of all, thank you, Chair, with regard to your action alert on the FAA. I did not get that directly in my office, so I'm pretty sure that none of the city agencies did. Congressman Ed Case said it came late. But I saw yours and another individual's on Facebook, and it was important because it impacts us. So out of the four areas that were identified for a decrease in the height limit to 700 to 800 feet was the stretch of mountain range between Honoma Bay and Kailua. So that would include Waianalo. So the good news is we did meet the deadline. It was 5:59 this evening. And so I was able to get Chair Waters, because he's Honoma Bay. And we sent a joint letter out about 5:30. And it is concerning because it impacts so many of us. And so I think that all of us have to be vigilant in working with FAA to understand that we did not get proper notification because they might think that we don't care. I'm pretty sure if they sent it to all of the council members, for example, we probably all would have been able to get it in. With regard to the agricultural, the city council's Agriculture Development Task Force, it launched on August 28. And representing the Windward Side is Haley McKinnon, who is the president of Waianalo Agricultural Association. I know that another individual was recommended, but she is dealing with some personal challenges. And so I just wanted to be respectful. Co-chairs of the task force include Davis Price, who many of you know in our Hawaiian community, as well as Taylor Kellerman, who is with Ko'oloa Ranch. They are still trying to fill their way around with regard to the scope because it's a lot. Their first report is due in December. And so at their next meeting, they're probably going to prioritize what their focus will be. I already mentioned the October 16 Public Safety Committee. And I understand that the next Waianalo Neighborhood Board meeting will be the Monday prior to that. So I will be working with all of you before that time. I do know that with regard to Windward Leaders, there was chaos or misunderstanding with regard to the maps because the county, state, and federal governments all had different types of maps. The city's website actually had an interactive map, which can be helpful on occasion, but not that day. So when it came to confirmation and clarification for the various areas, we couldn't get straight answers. And while I've already related to the Deputy Director for D, these are the questions that are going to be asked at the hearing. I have finally gotten into the modern age and have an Instagram account. I've only had Facebook. You can, it's Instagram account @cm, the letter C, M, Kiaaina. And for those of you who are already following me on Facebook, it's facebook.com/cmkiaaina. And lastly, you know, Bellows, I know that many of you in the community have been following what goes on at Bellows more than I have. And, you know, the only reason it has been, I've been thinking about Bellows is because of all the negotiations going on with regard to the state. I don't believe it should be limited to the army leases. The bottom line is that as all of the stakeholders negotiate, I should, I've always believed that all of Hawaii is a recreation. So to come to Hawaii and live in Hawaii, if you're serving in the military, then, you know, I feel that you already have the opportunity to have recreational activities. So I'm not a believer in lands being set aside for recreational use, including at Bellows. And so I just wanted to flag that. I will, I've been willing to work with members of the community who are interested in seeing that land come back. But in the short term, I am concerned about the active Instagram and Facebook feeds that promote commercialization at Bellows. And that's not just limited to their karaoke nights and massages and all kinds salsa classes, but it includes commercial activities in the water, diving, kayak use. And so my question, I guess, that's why I was confused about whether or not Bellows was here, is my question is, especially on the water, under what authority are they conducting such activities? Because you need a permit, not just for the beach. But when it comes to the water, there's a different types of permit. So I'm flagging this just to let you guys know what's on my mind and open to further discussion. Because, you know, I have heard that many of our homeless community who have been forced from city lands are actually on the DOD lands. And I guess it's concerning to me that while we can have this happening, people can have their recreational activities occurring, able to use the few, you know, houses that are there for their leisure. None of this is open to the Waianalo community or the general public. So it's just an issue that's top of mind. And I believe that, you know, since the stakeholders are working fast with regard to the negotiations on military leases, I just wanted to say that it's something that I am thinking about, but I will not take any action until I hear from the community. That's all. That's my report for the evening.
Council member, thank you so much for that report. Welcome, Ka'u. Thank you so much for serving in this role. We look forward to your contributions to the council member's office and this community. Questions for the council member? I do see a note, council member. Kuikie is interested in discussing this, the issue of Bellows. I know several of us are, including myself, and so we're happy to provide time to do so. I will share, just based on some of the experiences we've navigated prior, it's unclear if Bellows has a lease or is under executive order still. And so if, there is some, there is a land swap that took place in another, but it is unclear. And it's, to be very honest, we've been put into many dead ends. Yeah, if you want to respond to that. And then any members online, questions while the council member is here?
So let me just say that because, you know, I've worked on other, you know, land situations where, you know, whether it be Hawaiian homelands or the Public Land Trust, which are thorny. For me, it does not matter. I think it initially was a presidential executive order. And the question is whether that, whether that is the guiding authority or anything else. The fact of the matter is, I'm just guessing that they used a portion of it to retain for recreational purposes, and the rest, they entered to an agreement with the Marine Corps to do training. But when you look at the totality of a community, especially Waianalo, and you look at all of the condemned lands, not condemned lands, I take that back. The lands where there's a license agreement between the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and the city. I think as policymakers, no matter what level of government, it is our job to look at the impacts of various governmental agencies who have these lands. And so while I understand the need for military training, I do not understand the need for recreation, especially when I just explain the situation that we find ourselves in. And if there are ways that we could use that property, you, the community should determine who it would go to, whether it be the Department of Hawaiian Homelands or the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, whatever it is, we don't need to be worrying about whose lands. At the end of the day, it is the federal government's. We don't have to go through the land tenure. And I believe that it should be on the table.
Agreed. Mahalo. Thank you so much for that. I don't see any hands up for you, council member here, from any members online, anyone in public? Hearing none. Council member, as always, thank you so much for your leadership and your support of this community. And we do look forward to having these conversations in this particular respect. Mahalenui. Members, we're going to move on. Do we have anyone here from the senator's office? Senator Chris Lee? Hearing none. Anyone from Representative Lisa Martin's office? Hearing none. Representative from Governor Josh Green's office? Hearing none. And any member from the Congress member's Jill Takuta's office? Hearing none. We will continue on with our agenda. We have a board business scheduled before us, which will need to be deferred due to a lack of quorum. So we will add this to October. And that brings us to the end of our meeting this evening with the following announcements from our Neighborhood Commission office. Do you have any announcements for the community or for the board? Thank you, Brandon.
Yes, sorry. I'm just kind of blanking. I should have jotted this down. Oh, yeah, that the Neighborhood Plan Committee will be voting this month to approve the resolution to convert all the sub-districts in Waianalo to at-large.
Mahalenui. Thank you for that. We invite those that want to participate or just be present for that to do so. I intend to be present to answer any questions if there are any. Additionally, Brandon did bring some of the items that the board members are to, for distribution for the board members. It is some of the information that we talked about previously. I'm going to take them from him, and I will be contacting the board members to distribute that to you folks. So if you could please let me know. And then I am aware of that we still have some forms that need to fill out. So board members, if you have not completed your forms to serve on the board, you need to turn them in. And so I don't want to name anybody, but if you have not done it and you know you have not done it, please turn it in, and we'll follow up directly to get that information in. Again, if the forms do not get turned in, your seat on the board does get challenged. Okay, so I just need to repeat that. And I'm not clear on the process specifically, but I believe you vacate until those forms are submitted. So if you need help with the forms or if you need the forms specifically, please reach out to Brandon or myself, and we'll make sure that you get the information needed. Okay, next neighborhood board meeting is Monday, October 13, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And we'll be here at the Waianalo Public Library in the conference room. And the conference, excuse me, the schedule, Olalau broadcast schedule is listed for the Waianalo Neighborhood Board, number 32 meetings are broadcast on Olalau Channel 49, fourth Monday of the month at 9:00 PM, and the first and third Saturdays of the month at 3:00 PM. With that being said, I will ask if our co-chair would adjourn our meeting and close this off in pulle, if possible. Kuikie?
Who's that? The Uwekei. Mahalo, Chair. Mahalo, akakopaka ea pau. Pulika kau, auhe oikea koe noi, nana noi ho'ulika nimeka honua, nana no'okaman. Na kimiakona, ma'akona kupuna kopona keau. Hello, honuia, akakopaka ea pau. Mahalo, ekea koe noi, noko noha ane ma'akoukia iahi. Ipo, ekuka'aka ma'i liana, ma'kono e no'keka ya ulu, Waianalo nei. Amaloko, kelaa, lea, mahalo, kiia oikea koe noi, noko kako'ola, noko kako'ma'oli'ola, ami. Nopo me ka ea pau, apunio kako. Me kelaa, nana no'aku kako'ya o'e, alakaipua, no'opu me mako. Ika, ika pauana, o'ki'ala va'e, ehoana, me mako, iko kako vaheku pono. Nolaila, nana no'aku kako'ya o'e, me kaleo ha'aha'a, me kaleo mihi, me kaleo aloha, me kaleo mahalo. Ke'ma me pau, ma'ke no'aka'kei aku kako'ama, o'iasu no'. Amele, mahalo. Mahalo, Chair.
Mahalo, Kuikie, for that. Thank you. With no items before the board and no further items on the agenda, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:07 PM. We wish you folks safe travels and wealth, well-being, excuse me. Mahalenui, kako. Ahuiho?